Going to be online? Okay, all right.
Alderman Larson.
Here.
Alderman Smith.
Here.
Alderman Perkins.
Here.
Alderman McAdams.
Here.
Alderman Verbic. Alderman Faver.
Here.
Mayor Barnes.
Here.
All right, awesome. If all of you could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Alderman Faver, you want to lead this in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Alderman Faver. All right, I have the next item, Item C, Approval of the Agenda. I would take a motion, unless there's any changes to be made to the agenda.
Mayor motion on the consent agenda to pull the minutes.
All right, so I have a motion before us to pull the minutes of the consent agenda. I would need a second.
Second.
Excellent. So roll call.
Alderman Larson.
Yes.
Alderman Smith.
Yes.
Alderman Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Faver.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes. So on that, City Manager Nicholas, do we need discussion or we just pulled them and... What's the...
So we pulled them. You can, John, in your order, we can... Well, you just consider the consent agenda without that first item. Then after you do that, you go back to that one item.
Okay, perfect. All right, then, public participation. City Clerk Cohen, do we have any public participation?
I have not been given any.
All right, wonderful. All right, presentations. We have the DeKalb Fire Department Annual Report for Fiscal Year 2020. Chief, you're on.
Oh, Mayor Barnes? You haven't actually approved the agenda. You've just made the amendment.
Oh, thank you. I really appreciate that, City Clerk. All right, so at this time, for Item C, I would take a motion to approve the agenda.
The amended agenda.
The amended agenda.
So moved.
Second. So that was moved by Alderman Faver, seconded by Alderman Smith. Now we move the public participation, which there is none. Oh, roll. Thank you. Boy, you can tell it's my second day, you know? All right, I'll... Roll call, please, City Clerk Cohen.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Faver.
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes. Now technically, we'd be on Item D. There is no public participation. So we'll move on to Item E, Presentations. Item number one, DeKalb Fire Department Annual Report for Fiscal Year 2020. I think this time, Chief, you're on.
I'll actually defer to the...
Okay.
I'll start.
All right, you got it. You got it.
I'll start and then the Chief, we'll have a few comments to wrap our presentation. It's not been missed by any of us that we had a pandemic to deal with in 2020. And this report deals with fire department activity, particularly operations from January 1 through December 31, 2020. And in that time, as I've highlighted in your background, our fire department and fire departments across the country, across the world, had to deal with a lot of new challenges, not to mention new medical orders and procedures as a result of guidance we were getting from the medical community, public health and hospitals and so forth. We had to protect our personnel so they could protect the people that they were called to serve. We also had to go in search of the personal protective equipment and clothing and furnaces that were important to protect ourselves and others, like N95 masks and so forth. We had to do a lot of local emergency planning with our high-risk facilities, nursing homes and others. And we're a collaborator in a lot of that planning through the year. We also had to, particularly in the earlier stages of the pandemic, we saw a change in the demand level for our services. We have been running hot, as some members of the council will recall, from the last quarter of last year when we started talking in depth about where we were in 2019, ending that year in terms of, we hit a historic number of calls for service, particularly EMS. We started at that same pace and then all of a sudden it fell off for about three months in the pandemic. And why? Well, more people were staying home. They weren't trusting hospitals yet, and they weren't trusting medical personnel. And then as the trust levels came up and then there was an easing of constraints on businesses and so forth, the calls for service rose again. And there were ups and downs through the year. We ended the year with about the same number of EMS calls, which is always the larger category for calls overall. The annual breakdown, there are a lot of very nice and helpful charts in the annual report. And I recommend, this is on our website, I recommend it to people who are interested in knowing a little bit more detail about the fire department's range of services. Jeff, would you like to add something?
Thank you, City Manager Nicholas. Good evening, Mayor and Council. We're proud to present our 2020 Fire Department Annual Report, and we look forward to working with this new body for years to come. Within its pages, you'll find the data and the statistics needed to understand the service that we provide to both the citizens and the visitors of DeKalb. A sample of what you'll see in this report is that overall calls were down 5%. EMS calls decreased by 2%. Fire-related calls increased by 55%. Hazardous conditions remained steady, and false fire alarms decreased by 31%. Currently in 2021, we are outpacing the call volume seen in 2019, which was a record year for us, and we fully anticipate to surpass that mark this year. I invite you and the public to continue to review this report, to understand it, and contact me with any questions. I wanted to take a minute to use this platform for acknowledgement and to express appreciation. 2020 was a year that everybody will remember and at times want to forget. What was remarkable about 2020 was how our community rallied around each other from every angle. The city assisted local businesses. Businesses took care of their employees. Citizens, local organizations, faith-based communities rallied around local businesses and people with needs. And first responders were supported by all, with meals, face coverings, words of support, supplies and equipment. The members of the DeKalb Fire Department were fully committed to serving the community during this mysterious and challenging time. These challenges could not have been met without the help of other organizations, the council, city staff, and most importantly, our community. This was a true display of proudly DeKalb. On behalf of the men and women of the Fire Department, we thank everyone for your support now, in the past, and in the future as we continue to meet the needs of the city. At this time, though, if you have any questions about the annual report, I'd be happy to answer them.
Questions or comments? Well, going through the annual report, from my perspective, it was wonderful just listening to you talk about your firefighters, the commitment to the community, commitment to each other, the camaraderie that you all have, and the recruitment and the successful recruitment that you've made with your team is just absolutely phenomenal to see. And I always love when I saw the picture of the ladder truck with that big old hashtag proudly DeKalb sign. I think you guys are the epitome of what hashtag proudly DeKalb is. So make sure you pass on our thanks to your entire team, Chief.
I will do. Thank you so much.
You bet. Thank you. All right, number two. Presentation and check in the amount of $3,000 to the City of DeKalb from the Fairview Cemetery Association to partially fund the Fairview Drive pathway extension. City Manager?
Well, this is a pure pleasure. Mr. Garland and Mr. Higerson are here on behalf of the Fairview Cemetery Association to present a check to us in the amount of $3,000.
Wonderful. Gentlemen?
I'm Steve Garland. I'm the president of the Fairview Cemetery Association. The cemetery, if you're not familiar, is on the south side of DeKalb. It's on Fairview Drive and First Street. There's almost 400 acres of land down there. It was started in 1903. We have over 10,000 people buried at the cemetery. Our mausoleum was started in 1915. We also have a pet cemetery. So we would like to present to the mayor and the city council, and as a thank you, $3,000 check towards the bike path. Bob?
We have to get a picture of that, Bob. Steve?
All right, everybody here. Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Fantastic contribution to a project that is just going to benefit so many once we complete it. So again, thank you to the Fairview Cemetery for their contribution towards that. Moving on, number three, we have a proclamation observing General Aviation Month. I didn't know Renee was here. I didn't see her. No?
She is not. That's another commitment at the airport. But in her behalf, I just wanted to say that it's probably fortuitous that this particular honor or observation comes at this month because this time last year, we were really in the middle of our COVID year. And the pandemic constraints, the business constraints, were particularly hard on the general aviation community. A lot of the festivals that were around the upper Midwest that helped our airport because people would fly in and gas up and go, or sometimes they'd stay overnight and meet with other pilots from our area and then go together to Oshkosh or one of those other places where those were canceled. Naturally, people still who were angered at our airport flew, but it was a long year. And so the Airport Board and Alderman Faver is a member of our liaison to the Airport Board wrestle with this. We tried to focus on being more inviting and more openly friendly to those pilots that did venture out. And we've made some improvements at the airport, and I'm grateful to Renee for leading that. And our gas remained pretty cheap through the year, as it has for a number of years, and it still is today. So just thanks to all those pilots who are committed to coming to our airport, those that are leasing from us and our regular friends and familiar faces to us, they add a real important element to our community. So it's a nice observation. Thank you for the proclamation.
Awesome. Any comments or questions? All right, I'm going to go ahead and read the proclamation. Now I can read it. Whereas the City of DeKalb and the state of Illinois has a significant interest in the continued vitality of general aviation, aircraft manufacturing, aviation educational institutions, aviation organizations, and community airports. And whereas general aviation and the Kalb Taylor Municipal Airport have an immense economic impact on the city of DeKalb. And whereas general aviation airports in the state of Illinois supports over $9 billion in total economic output. And whereas general aviation not only supports DeKalb's economy, it improves overall quality of life by supporting emergency medical and healthcare services, law enforcement, firefighting, and disaster relief, investments in sustainable fuels and technologies, and by transporting business travelers to their destinations quickly and safely. And whereas these aircraft in our network of airports represent a national public benefit, congressional oversight should be in place of the system to ensure that it remains a public system and serves communities of all sizes. And whereas general aviation has been deeply impacted by the COVID-19 pandemic, causing an impact on operations, jobs, independent industries, sectors, and communities. And whereas general aviation stands to be at the forefront of the overall economic recovery. And whereas the United States faces a shortage of aviation professionals, leaders should invest in this critical infrastructure to ensure future economic growth and our next generation of aviation professionals and pilots. Now therefore, I, Cohen Barnes, Mayor of the City of DeKalb, do hereby proclaim general aviation a vital strategic asset to the City of DeKalb and declare June as General Aviation Appreciation Month in the City of DeKalb. Nice job. All right, number three. Oh, sorry, it's going to be number four, Proclamation Older Americans Month. City Manager?
Thank you. This was presented to us by the Voluntary Action Center, and it celebrates the historic and continuing contributions of older citizens. And I don't, not exactly sure what they mean by old. Someday I'll be there and I'll...
We're all a little unsure what should be that category. I believe we have someone from Voluntary Action Center here, correct?
I do. I wasn't completely prepared to speak, but just a little bit.
If you want to come to the mic up here, that'd be fantastic. And then I'll read the proclamation.
Truly come in. We'd just like to thank everyone, including the City of DeKalb, for all the support for not just meals on wheels, but our transportation services throughout the pandemic and 2020 and continuing on. And Older American Month just kind of accentuates the services we do and the care for those people. So thank you guys so much for acknowledging it.
Thank you. And if you give me a second, I'll read this proclamation and then we can get a picture real quick.
Sure.
I'll be as quick as I can. So Older Americans Month 2021, May 2021. Whereas the City of DeKalb includes a growing number of older Americans who have built resilience and strength over their lives through successes and difficulties. And whereas the City of DeKalb benefits when people of all ages, abilities, and backgrounds are included and encouraged to share their successes and stories of resilience. And whereas the City of DeKalb recognizes the need to nurture ourselves, reinforce our strength, and continue to thrive in times of both joy and difficulty. And whereas the City of DeKalb can foster communities of strength by creating opportunities to share stories and learn from each other, engaging older adults through education, recreation, and service, and encouraging people of all ages to celebrate connections and resilience. Now therefore, I, Cohen Barnes, Mayor of the City of DeKalb, Illinois, do hereby proclaim May 2021 to be Older Americans Month and urge every resident to recognize older adults and the people who support them as essential contributors to the strength of our community. All right, moving on to appointments. Item number one, the reappointment of Pat Fagan to the Police Pension Board for a two-year term beginning June 1, 2021 and extending through May 31, 2023. Do we take any action on appointments?
The council usually concurs with the mayor's recommendation.
Via roll or head nod?
Probably. You could motion and second and roll.
I would take a motion to reappoint Pat Fagan.
So moved?
Second.
So it was moved by Alderman Adams, seconded by Alderman Faver. City Clerk Cohen, roll call, please.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Faver.
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes. Wonderful. Thank you very much. And don't let me forget the discussion. If I rush through something, feel free to be like, hey, hey, hey. I am a little foggy on, we pulled out the minutes from the consent agenda. So at this point, we approved the new, or the agenda as it is. The minutes are pulled out, so at this point, do we discuss why we pulled them out or just we're good?
No, if you would like, I could just state the motion for the consent agenda.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Let's do a motion to approve the consent agenda consisting of Items 2 through 5 on the agenda, which I'll read them all aloud as follows. Number 2, accounts payable in payroll through May 17, 2021 in the amount of $3,43,204.74. Number 3, investment and bank balance summary through March 2021. Number 4, year-to-date revenues and expenditures through March 2021. And number 5, Freedom of Information Act FOIA report dated April 2021.
So I would take a motion to approve the modified consent agenda as just stated.
So moved.
Second.
So it was moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman Perkins. Discussion at all? So the only reason we pulled the minutes out is there's just an error that City Clerk Cohen is going to go ahead and modify, and we'll bring it back to the council next time and approve them at that time. No other discussion? Roll call, City Clerk Cohen.
McAdams.
Yes.
Faver.
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes. All right, moving on to item number H, Public Hearings. We have none. So that'll move us on to Agenda Item I, Considerations. Consideration number 1, consideration of a sump pump assistance program in cooperation with the Kishawaki Water Reclamation District's lateral assistance program. City Manager?
Thank you. I'll be brief. I've got a fair amount of background here, but I'll hit some highlights. And I wanted to let you know that Mark Eddington, the Executive Director of the Kishawaki Water Reclamation District, is here tonight. And as you'll see as I get into my brief remarks, that this is a collaborative program we're proposing. It's a program that we had funded in the preparation of the budget last fall. It's in the amount of $100,000. And for the city's portion, our intent is to help people with nagging water problems in and around their foundations owing in large part to sump pumps that are not directly connected to storm sewers in the curb line outside of their house for a variety of reasons. That's, of course, not an inexpensive connection to make. It's often best made when you're building a house. Most of our houses are already built. They've been built for a while. People live in them. And what they do is they find a way in their yard, and they hose out in varying shapes and sizes. And for a while, that works, but if you have a particularly wet period, it makes your yard wet to wet the mole, and it makes your neighbor's yard wet, and that doesn't make for good neighbors. So what do you do? And oftentimes, people get estimates of what it would cost to trench something through their side yard into their front yard and tie into the back of the storm piping under the street, which is below the frost line. Not something you do on a weekend, and you have to be a licensed contractor to do that. And the cost is just not bearable. So years ago, some 20, 25 years ago, the city had a program just exactly like this. It really helped. But that was 25 years ago. There are a lot more problems that have arisen. And another thing that happens, if you don't want to put the water into your side yard, what people have done sometimes in the four walls of their basement is they look around and, oh, there's a pipe, and that goes out of the house, and it's connected to a pipe in the street. It turns out that's the sanitary line. And that kind of cross-connection of storm and sewer is going to cause, particularly during wetter periods, a real problem for the Kishawaki Water Reclamation District, which processes all that water that goes in the sewer piping to their plant. So it makes some sense that we would work together on this. The Kishawaki Water Reclamation District has a program, also of $100,000, with a little different emphasis. Obviously, it's to help take some infiltration and water out, but not necessarily the sump pump lines, which is what the city's program's for. But there are other reasons that people would want to ensure that the connection between their house and the pipe in the main in the street is sound and correctly evacuating that wastewater. One problem that people have in older neighborhoods is backup in their drains in the basements, which never maybe had the proper foundation tile around them. So there's a lot of water pressure. It seeps up around the corners between where the walls and the floors hit. And it floods their nice carpeted basement area. And that's, of course, not just an aggravation, but a real cost to repair. Another type of repair that people could do is to put an overhead pump, like a sump pump that you have in your basements, but it's called a sewer sump. And there are some communities that actually require this in all the new construction. It pumps it overhead and it goes, so you'll never have the backup in your basement that you do in the older neighborhoods and older homes, older construction. So in fact, it was last fall that, as we were putting together our budget, I attend the monthly meetings of the Kishawaki Water Reclamation District, and they were talking about this program, and I thought, that's a really good program. If we can do it, we had enough in our capital fund to seed our program. At least try it for years, see how much progress we can make. And the homeowner could be a double winner here, could be eligible for both. Can attack the sump pump problem and also the sewer problems and the potential backup in lower areas of town where that is a particular problem. So that's a quick run-through, and I'm sorry to do it in such haste, but there's more depth in the background here. And I wanted to set up Mr. Eddington, who has taken his evening time to join us and tell us a little bit about their program. Thank you, Mark.
Bill, I'm just happy to be here on Elder Americans.
Thanks for joining me.
No, my name's Mark Eddington. I'm the Executive Director of Kishawaki Water Reclamation District. And Bill really explained it pretty well. I don't know if you have that picture, Bill, that you had in the packet? I don't know if you could flip that up or not. That's helpful. But this... No worries. The sanitary district developed, we call it the LAP, or our lateral assistance program. So we have, it's our first year of rolling this program out. We have $100,000. And folks that are eligible, and eligibility is residential only, so residential owners can apply for this funding. And you have to be, you know, a customer of Kishawaki Water Reclamation District. So that's really the eligibility, and you can apply online at our website for it. And if you have, if you want to install a backflow prevention device, and Bill outlined a, you know, overhead sewer system, or if you wanted to install some sort of check valve, so say you live in an area that has high water table and tends to flood during these gully washers that we have, our district would participate 50%, up to $5,000. So it'd be $10,000 total cost. The district would pay $5,000 of that $10,000 to have one of those approved devices installed for anybody that's interested. We also have another program that kind of works hand-in-hand with it, and that's to rehab the lateral that goes from the house to the public sewer in the street. For those of you that aren't familiar, the homeowner actually owns that pipe and the connection of that pipe to the public main in the street. And as we, probably most of you know, or some of you here know, when you have a backup or you have a failing lateral and you have to get that replaced, invariably, like Bill described, it's expensive. It's not something you do over a nighttime or something like that. And the public main is in the middle of the street usually. So that's where the real costly improvement happens. So our program also would pay 50% of any rehabilitation or replacement of that sewer lateral up to $5,000 out to the street. So as part of applying for our program, we would, the district would come in, if you want to be part of this program, and we would inspect the house and the basement to ensure that there's no sump pumps or any other kind of illegal connections where we might be getting stormwater into the sanitary sewer line. To give you guys some perspective, we treat about, on average, about 6 million gallons of wastewater a day. And when we have, I'll use, for example, we had a seven-inch rain in April 2013, and we saw 72 million gallons at our plant. So you can imagine all of that water rushing in. While it's diluted and a lot of it's stormwater, it causes havoc, you know, from where it enters through the local neighborhoods, all the way to our facility. So in any event, this program will certainly improve aging infrastructure. Folks that have to rod their sewer multiple times a year, they'd be a prime candidate to take advantage of something like this so they don't have that cost anymore moving forward. And it's going to improve water quality. So we encourage, we're going to reach out to local plumbers, make sure they're aware of this program because they're usually the person on the ground. When someone has a problem, they call a plumber, so we want to make sure they're aware of these opportunities and try to steer people to us for questions and to our website where there's an online application. So with that, are there any questions?
I think not so much a question, but just to give a perspective here. So as Mark said, they treat about, is it 6 million gallons? An average day, something like that. And we pump about 3 million. So how do you explain the other 3? It's getting in somewhere. Now, there may still be some cross-connections, you know, sewer pipes that have cracks in them and are near the river, and the river's actually flooding in. Most of those were identified and fixed years ago. So we've got a lot of sump pump water coming in and other infiltration that is... And some of it's coming in the laterals, the house laterals. If it's the old clay laterals and they're letting some groundwater in and so forth. But that's a lot, and that's not on a rainy, in a rainy... But that's a lot, and that's not on a rainy, in a rainy, heavy rainy period. So it would be better for all of us, less cost for the community, if we can tackle this with these programs. So that's why we're recommending this tonight.
No, I think, you know, I'd be happiest if I could go back to my board of trustees and said, next year we need $200,000 to increase this program. I mean, that's, we'll happily spend that money to try to make these improvements.
Any questions, Alderman Perkins?
How many, how many homes do we think are, will satisfy these requirements in DeKalb? Just ballpark, trying to gauge?
Like, oh, well, I'd say there's about 10,000 residential connections to, you know, out of our customer base. So of those, I would guess probably 6,000 are toward the older side rather than the newer type. Because when I say newer construction, I say maybe construction that's incurred since 1980. So a lot of the, especially a lot of the older areas in town that tend to have flooding, they also tend to have, you know, old clay or old orangeberg services where as soon as someone digs in to, you know, to kind of make a little fix, they find they have to replace the entire thing because that's the time to do it. So a lot of these are our emergency situations too. And folks, you know, we have lots of instances where folks buy a new house or buy a house that's new to them, and you have, say, a single resident move out who didn't use the plumbing very often, and so didn't have anything, any sort of issues. And then you have a family that moves into that house, and the next week, they're calling us because they've got an issue with backups and such. And that's just due to a deteriorating pipe, and now it wasn't getting a lot of usage, now it's getting a ton of usage. And it's the worst thing you want to see as you move into your new, your new house. So...
So just with the numbers though, so did we look at, we got potentially 6,000 older homes, right? And a percentage of those were replaced under the prior program, I would guess. I don't know. I'm just trying to get at what the exposure is, is that potentially on it? Is the $100,000 going to be the tip of the iceberg, you know? Are we going to be looking at $200,000 next year? Is it, just kind of gauging the direction of where this is going to go?
Yeah, and it's a good question, and we had the same kind of a program, almost the same amount of money 25 years ago. It only went for a year, maybe it went two years, I can't recall exactly. People are still going to be reluctant to step forward because they have to pay 50%.
Right.
And if it's the combination of the two together to do it right, and you've got two lines basically going to two different pipes in the street, even if the total of that is 10,000, and we say, hey, we'll give you five and three, and it's eight, they still have to come up with $2,000. And that's not something a lot of people are just, it's sitting on the kitchen counter ready to spend, you know, so...
So that touches on a second point. So they can piggyback them together?
We can, yes.
If their cost is, if they're out of pocket, if the cost is 10 grand, five and three...
It would make sense to do them at the same time, you know? And they can go pretty close to each other. You don't have to tear up your whole front yard, but it really depends where the piping is in the street and so forth. And we would help, our inspectors would be out there, you know, we'd also kind of locate from above with our detection devices where these pipes are and so forth.
And I bet on average, we'd see about 10 to 15 of these a year. These sorts of replacements that come across our desks in a year.
And we'll have some more.
Right.
But I don't think it's going to be a huge wave. But I think from time to time, if you do this every three or four years, you get another backlog, you get some people who just come to us and say, boy, I'd love to do something about that, but I don't, I can't, I can't swing it. Do you have a city program to help? And that's what this is.
And one last one.
Sure.
So historically, do you know where we've had more incidents with this within the community? Is it, and are there in certain areas?
I mean, really, a lot of the flooding occurs in some of the older parts of town, in particular, not far from Old City Hall. So talk about Franklin, talk about Grove. There are other areas in town, and we've done an extensive amount of work over the years, lining sewers, replacing sewers. We have 170 miles of public sewers that we need, the owner operate and maintain. But double that, and that's the amount of private pipe that's out there that no one's touched in a lot of instances because it's worked fine. But like anything, you know, it fails over time.
Sure. Any other questions or comments from council? So is this just a...
It's always, it's a bit of a, here's where we are, and I just want to make sure you're still okay, because we're going to, we'd like to go live with this. We'd like to start inviting people to apply and work with, this is the time of year when people might be thinking about that.
Okay, so no roll call required? You're just looking for us to say?
Yeah, it's just, I guess I'd like to hear if there are objections. If not, we're going to proceed.
So any objections for City Manager Nicholas?
Okay.
No? All right, you got what you need, Bill.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
All right, item number two, consideration of a downtown bike way to complement the Lincoln Highway reconfiguration between First and Fourth Streets. City Manager Nicholas?
Well, when I first started writing this, I thought this might be a gut-wrenching experience tonight. But happily, we have an outstanding city engineer, Zach Gill, who's in the audience tonight, and he doesn't like to take bows. But I will tell you, he's been working very creatively and very diligently on trying to address something that came up just really about a month ago, as we were just double-checking with our partners at the state level and Department of Transportation, who ultimately have the say over what happens on a state marked route like Lincoln Highway from First to Fourth in the downtown area, which, as you know, has been targeted for reconfiguration to make that part of the downtown more user-friendly, widen the sidewalks on either side, convert it from a four-lane to a three-lane section, more room for sidewalk sales and seating downtown, and some greenery, and hopefully inviting for people to hang out, because now when you're on the sidewalk, you don't feel like you're going to get run over by a truck. All that is good. I think the community's just been anxious, waiting for us to go. And as it got to the final levels of approval, we've got full sets of plans now, have had them down at IDOT since the first week in March. We learned that there is a state enactment called Complete Streets, which apparently is going to be brought into play. DeKalb's been a bicycle-friendly community for a long time. We've got a lot of bike paths. Some of the gentlemen who were here earlier tonight who were involved with the Fairview Semer, Terry are also involved with the Kiwanis Club, which has been very generous toward, you know, investing in our local bike paths and as of other social service clubs. And so we thought we were in good shape. A lot of our bike paths go north and south rather than east and west, and part of that is because of, like on Lincoln Highway, for instance, in the downtown area, we've got two major mark, state marked routes and two national railroad lines across at Fourth Street, not the place where you want to bring bicyclists heading westbound on Lincoln Highway. And by the same token, from First Street and Lincoln Highway going west, we don't have any designated bike paths. So we thought it won't apply here, we'll see where else it might apply. Well, it does apply. And the requirement is that we have to find an alternative on a parallel path. And there are two parallel paths that are close enough to meet the IDOT requirements, and one would be Grove Street and one would be Locust Street. We initially looked at Locust Street. One thing, one measurement to keep in mind, and correct me if I'm wrong, Zach, but the enactment has some criteria. If from curb to curb on that parallel street, you have 30 feet or more, which is usually enough room for two driving lanes and a bike path on either side, plus some parking, then you can proceed. If you don't have that 30 feet, if it's 29 and a half feet or 29 feet or whatever, as it is in the Lincoln High, or on, excuse me, on the Locust Street side, then you have a problem. You have to dedicate one of your 10-foot driving lanes, so you basically combine the two bike paths that would otherwise be on the two curb lines into one 10-foot path rather than two 5-foot paths. So we thought we'd look at Locust Street, well, maybe there'd be some, it's certainly a gathering area, maybe that would work, but the, and you've gotten a few letters and comments probably in the last week, businesses and entities such as the Egyptian, which use the Locust Street corridor for loading, unloading, and so forth, would have a real problem. Also, there are a couple of businesses that are right at Fourth and Locust. So can you imagine if we had had an eastbound-only Locust Street that took you from First to Fourth? And if you're on Fourth and you see where you want to go, you want to go to the key shop, you want to go just a little beyond that, and you can't get there and you knew this town and you don't know how you're going to get around there, and you go up to Oak Street and you see that's one lane going the other way, you know? So issues. We looked harder than at Grove Street, and Grove Street has 30-plus feet. That means we can put the five feet on either side. And although between First and Second, as you know, we have a parking lot there, we also have a pretty wide green path, or green strip that is just south of the railroad that would make a nice little meandering, tree-lined bike way from Second to First. And so with Zach's keen engineering, I think we found a solution. We are recommending the Grove Street option to you, and be happy to answer any questions you have. With this, with your guidance and hopefully with your support, then we commit, and timing is the essence here, we commit 100% to that. We modify the plans and await IDOT's final decision.
Questions or comments, council? Alderman Perkins?
So to clarify then, we're facing this because we want to reconfigure the downtown road.
Correct.
If we did nothing, we wouldn't have, we wouldn't be facing this, right?
Yeah.
Okay. It just...
If we didn't want to do the downtown reconfiguration, then we wouldn't have to do this.
Okay. It's an interesting predicament.
Yes.
That by doing something, we buy into something else, too.
Yeah.
But the impact, I think the impact to downtown is just going to be so significant, even as an economic driver, to make it more pedestrian-friendly, make it friendly for restaurants to have outdoor sidewalk dining. You know, I think long-term, that's going to be the benefit and the reward that we're going to reap from doing something like this.
And City Manager, is this, is any major construction project we do on a state route, we're going to have to always deal with this?
We are from now on.
Got to love Illinois. Other question? I do love Illinois, but yeah. Alderman Smith?
Zach can probably answer this, Bill. How are we going to, I'm sitting here looking at the parking lot, and I trust Zach's...
Yeah, we don't have a rendering for you, but there's a little jog, you know? It comes, and then the entrance to the parking lot's just a little bit south of the center line of Grove as you're heading to the west. But that provides a little bit of, I don't know, what do we say, character? Obviously, bikes do move to the left and to the right, so it's not a, it's not a major shift. And once you get, we'll have to cut the curb and create the ramp that goes to the 5-foot sidewalk that takes people over the grass. Well, obviously, there'll be a, it's not over the grass, there'll be a sidewalk there. We'll build a sidewalk, and it'll go a little bit up, there's a little slope there, and then it'll go down again, and we won't substantially affect the parking in that parking lot.
I suppose I'll ask the proverbial question. How are we going to tie? I guess the long-term goal is to tie into the bike path at Pearl Street?
So first, now, this is where I defer to Zach, because it just happens we're doing a major reconstruction of First Street this summer, and it just happens, and we're using MFT funds, and there is a line-stripe bike way on First Street, so Zach, you can explain how that...
I figured he didn't have that solid...
Just by coincidence, we got lucky, it emerges.
Yeah, the DOT will require what's called logical points of termini for this path to connect back into the system. We can't just randomly stripe Grove from First to Fourth and be like, it's over there, fellas. So better to be lucky than good, right? We happen to be doing First Street this year, so we already have a right-of-entry permit from the railroad. So as we resurface First, we can restripe this with the bike lanes as a maintenance exercise, and there's no further clearance of the railroad reviewing this. We're not changing the use as bicycles are already in approved on-street use.
Thanks, Zach. One more, are we going to go past Fourth Street then? Are we, what are your...
Going eastbound?
Yeah.
Our inclination is not to. That is, again, a state route. I think we've taken it to their doorstep. If they wish to have the bike path turn and proceed north on Route 23 for a block to get back to Lincoln Highway, they can. If not, we can, in the future, apart from any of their oversight, extend it down Grove again on our own to get to Seventh Street or maybe some other measures, but it won't have to meet the same standards as they do, so.
Thank you very much.
Any further questions? How about any objections?
None.
None?
Well, thank you. We'll proceed with the Grove Street.
Thanks again, Zach.
All right, moving on to item number four, consideration of aggregate 2020 DeKalb County Real Estate Tax Bill on DeKalb taxpayers. Did I miss it?
Another bike start.
See, you guys are looking at me, yep. I was wondering where that was. All right, this is the fun one. Item number three, consideration of the addition of a suspended bike path crossing as part of the North First Street Bridge reconstruction. City Manager Nicholas?
Okay, bike path again. And so as I think most of you know, the North First Street Bridge is going to be reconstructed next year, a major project funded substantially with state dollars, which means there's, there is attention to how the very long bike path that connects First Street to roughly Anderson Hall on NIU campus, there's a very nice bike path, walking path, it's on the north side of the levee there, going from the NIU campus to First Street. And then it stops at the bridge there. Over the years, the logical thing that people do is they walk, they get off, they don't always get off, walk their bike down on the sidewalk on either side of the bridge, and then go on the south side of the bridge and go eastbound some more. There's a sidewalk continues along the levee on the south side of the river there. The possibility of linking the bike path in a safer way so people don't have to stop, maybe wait for traffic to clear, and we've, by the way, tried marking that so people could expect that there would be some yielding, that the traffic just doesn't yield there, never has, probably never will. We have some nice sign, and we have some nice striped areas, and people just blow right on by. It's a major passageway for students going to and from the middle school. And then particularly in the evenings, a lot of adults and children use the bike path. So we've talked to the IDOT engineers, they have scripted, they're designed a way, if you can remember what happened at the Kishawaki River Bridge by the lagoon, except something less ambitious in terms of length and so forth, but that path coming from NIU would eventually have to come down on the levee to a lower level, and it goes under the newer bridge, which will not be an arched bridge, but it'll be, you know, adjusted in some way, and then you actually go under, and then you come up, and almost like you're on the tollway doing an internal loop, and then you come up, and you're now, you're on the east side of the bridge and protected, and then get, walk over the bridge and go east on the bike path. So we don't have a detailed rendering, but in your background tonight and in the, on the city's website where you can find our agendas, there's a little bit of a rendering of how that would work. So 80% of that would be paid for by the MFT monies that we have been collecting for the last couple of years in anticipation of doing the bridge reconstruction, which is a major capital project. And the other 20%, we feel could probably come from residual MFT monies from the last year or so of capital projects that have had some savings, so I think we can probably pull this off without investing any money from our capital fund. But somebody pays, right? So state taxpayers, all of us, we pay for this. Our MFT dollars, what we pay at the pump, go toward this.
Council, questions? All of them in favor?
I love it. I think it's a great idea. I've traversed this area several times, and you're right. I mean, depending on the time of day or the day of the week, you know, if it's a school day at 3:00 in the afternoon, there's no crossing that street. So I think it's great. I think it just again supports the pedestrian-friendly, bike-friendly community that DeKalb is. It's a great idea, thank you.
Thank you.
Alderman Smith?
How wide is it, Zach? How wide is it, Zach? Five, five, how wide is it, five feet, ten feet? Just out of curiosity.
It should be the standard ten feet considering for us to... We designed to, yeah.
Great, so Alderman, Favor can go one way and I can go the other and we'll make it. Thank you very much.
Suspended by rope, so it's going to be a little bit, a little bit like this. We gotta save money somewhere.
This is a great idea, I agree, thank you very much for this.
Alderman Perkins?
So I guess I do have a clarifying question, so there's, there's really, is there anything suspended or is this just an underpass underneath First Street that comes up and around?
Correct, this would be built on the northern embankment, so they would essentially move the actual abutment of the bridge a little further north to create that ten feet and you would pass in front of that, so, and then circle up around and cross in a separated but at street-grade level.
But there, but there's not really anything suspended?
No.
It's an under, because I see the suspended, consideration of an addition of a suspended bike path, that's why I was kind of confused, because I see suspended and then underpass and I'm like...
I, I'm sorry for the, I mean, the common sense definition of suspension, I drove me it in the same direction. It's, it's a term of art apparently now in engineering circles to refer to that, because it, it's not really floating, but it goes under and around and, and on a, on a new platform, it's solid though, it's not suspended in that sense.
Okay, all right.
So it's not ropes hanging it from the bottom of the bridge?
No.
Okay, all right. Any other comments? Agreed, I, I think this is a phenomenal project. When you look at that underpass on Lincoln Highway, the amount of activity, I mean, I walk that on a regular basis and there are people constantly accessing our parks via that, but then also I run a race, the Calcorn Classic 10K, 5K, and we went from a hundred and sixty runners to over seven hundred runners just because we now have the ability to be able to traverse our parks because of that underpass. So, I, I think this just opens up so many doors, even ones that we're not aware of, let alone the safety features associated with it. So, I guess, any objections from counsel for them to move forward on this?
Okay. Is that what you need, city manager?
Yes, thank you.
Awesome. All right, now moving on to number four, consideration of the aggregate 2020 DeKalb County real estate tax bill on DeKalb taxpayers. City manager Nicholas?
This is just information only, we had just a little bit of conversation here at the last regular meeting and I thought it'd be useful to go back and see just exactly what the shakeout was for the other taxing bodies in, in black and white, and you have that in, in one of the tables. And then there's also an historic table which I threw together that shows where we were ten years ago and where we are today in terms of your city tax rate, which is just a portion, a tenth of the overall or aggregate rate. You can see the, the city's portion of the aggregate rate has been going down, it's three years in a row now, and hopefully we keep that up. And in the arithmetic that creates the rate, it's, it's a fairly simple equation, you can still raise your levy if the overall city wealth is, is increasing, which is the denominator, and you're still going to have a lower rate. If we weren't growing, if there weren't an expansion of our, of our aggregate tax base, then those higher levies that may happen from year to year would be, would begin to raise our rate. I think we're doing what we can, other taxing bodies who rely more heavily on the property tax may not be in as flexible a position, and there have been times, certainly just the last year as an example, when our reliance on alternative sources of revenue, general revenues such as sales taxes, use taxes, restaurant bar tax, so forth, was severely strained and we didn't have a property tax we could, we could rely on for general operations, it was all going into pension obligations. So, it's, there are constraints that we have that we work in, but I, I applaud the counsel for working creatively to try to help everybody, the people we serve, as we're considering these, these decisions. So, so there it is in some greater detail.
Counsel, questions, comments?
Well, I really appreciate you taking the time, just so I'm clear, so 2018 the tax rate went down, 2019 the tax rate went down, 2020, so that's three years in a row.
Correct.
Yeah, so I, I believe it was misrepresented at the last council meeting, so I'm glad you took the time to do the math, to give us the facts on back-to-back years, the tax rate of the city of DeKalb being lowered. And I got an essay from someone that's new up here, I have to give a lot of thanks to counsel that was there during the time, to former council members and our former mayor and especially city manager Nicholas and your team to be able to go after it and lower the tax rate through everything that went on. So, absolutely wonderful work, everyone.
All right, moving on to agenda item J, number one, a resolution 2021-041, resolution 2021-041, authorizing the purchase of a F-550 one-ton aerial truck in the amount not to exceed $106,768. I would take a motion to bring this to the floor.
So moved?
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman McAdams and a second by Alderman Favor. City, we'll do discussion, so city manager Nicholas?
Yeah, just very briefly, I, I think you've got enough in your background here, but most people who are driving on our, our highways and byways, they know one of these orange aerial trucks and it's usually got somebody suspended below a traffic signal or working on a street light or something. Obviously, these have to be safe, this has been repaired many times, it's twenty-two years old and it's, we're not going to get it through the test lane anymore after this year, so we, it's time, it takes a little while to get these, they're, you know, they're on a, a pretty standard truck body, but it's, it's the guts that can sit on top of it that are the, one of the more expensive pieces of this, so that's why we got up over a hundred thousand dollars. What we do typically is go through the state purchase system, which has, this, this state of Illinois does aggressive solicitation of bids in literally hundreds of different categories of things, equipment, capital equipment, vehicles and, and chairs and tables and all the rest of that. We can't locally beat those prices, so we find somebody on their list who's nearby, like a vehicle, a vendor, and in this case we did, and it's Sutton out of, I've lost it here, Mattson, Illinois. But it's the lowest price we can get for this kind of an aerial that, that fits our needs, it's not the biggest one you'll see, but it's one that gets to all the places we needed to get. And then once we make that commitment, we eventually transfer the obligation to a lease, which helps us with our general capital funds balance. And we're watching that, by the way, we, we knew we had this amount of money available to go out and go ahead and buy a vehicle and then translate it to a lease when we did our budget last year. There's a, at this point, we've done some leasing for the last couple of years, you reach a certain point where your debt service for those leases, even at a low rate, two percent or less, is inching up as, in cumulative ways, and we have to either take a break or we maybe buy a few vehicles, slow our pace so we can get through the three- or five-year lease period and then can, can really, we're, we're trying to keep it pretty level at this point, but this year works.
Counsel? Hearing no questions or comments? And we need a roll call on this, right?
We do.
All right, city clerk Cohen, roll call?
Favor.
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, Andy, enjoy, you guys needed a new piece of equipment, so I'm glad to do that for you, man. All right, number two, resolution 2021-042, authorizing payment in the amount of $21,558.60 to Macon County Law Enforcement Training Center for three police officers to attend the Basic Law Enforcement Academy. City manager Nicholas? Oh, I'll take a motion to bring it to the floor.
So moved?
Second.
That was a motion by Alderman Smith, a second by Alderman Perkins. City manager Nicholas?
As you can see by the background, we now have to pay upfront for the training costs for persons going into the academies, and then we get reimbursed after the fact, but that keeps the money flowing into the academies and, and keeps the, the teaching going. This just started, we didn't know when we graduated three officers back in April that that would be the case, so we're, we're, we're backing up a little bit here and compensating and, and that's what this $21,558.60 is for, three officers. We have to pay our bill, we can anticipate that this is what we'll be doing going forward and we hopefully get a, a substantial reimbursement for that upfront cost.
And we feel the probability of that reimbursement is high?
For now, for now.
Yeah. Counsel, comments, questions? Hearing none, roll call, city clerk?
Larson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic. Or Favor.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes.
All right, item number three, resolution 2021-043, authorizing the purchase and equipping of a 2021 Ford Explorer Police Interceptor vehicle based on the Illinois Central Management Services contract pricing in the amount not to exceed $36,485. I would take a motion to bring this to the floor.
So moved?
Second.
That was a motion by Alderman Smith, a second by Alderman Favor. City manager Nicholas?
Kind of similar to the lift truck, a little bit different because in this case, we, we didn't have a really old vehicle, we had a relatively new vehicle that was T-boned and as I said later on in my background, unfortunately, our, our coverage, even, even with the addition of the insurers for the offending driver, the civilian driver, still left us short about $11,000, but for now, the, the task is to replace the vehicle as a frontline squad. We go out and we purchase it and then we, we look at what we want to do with the enterprise lease package.
Comments, questions? Alderman Favor?
This is just a purchase of the vehicle, is there been, are there going to transfer equipment from the previous vehicle or is this...
It's, well, as for the detail, chief, do you know if any of it was salvageable? I don't know.
Thank you, so it, it would depend, sir, we'll have to take a look at, see how much damage was done. I mean, there's a docking station in there, he did get basically T-boned in the intersection, so it could be some extensive damage to those docking stations, but any equipment that can be reused, of course, we will do that, but like I said, we want to make sure it is up to standard before we would do that.
Cost analysis, whether we should up our insurance to, to do more?
We're, we're, well, I'll tell you what we're doing, we're going to bid on our comp and liability, so that gives you, that kind of answers that, yeah. I, I, I agree, that's, that's a substantial cost for us on something wasn't our fault, you know?
And I, I don't know, you know, it's one of those where I don't know if we knew that, that we had that risk, if we had a...
I, I don't know, as I sit here tonight, I'm going to have to ask the staff.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Other questions? Roll call, city clerk Cohen?
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes. All right, moving on to item number K, or item letter K, ordinance's second reading, we have none, so then moving on to L, ordinance's first reading. Number one, ordinance 2021-018 approving a special use permit for dwelling units above the ground floor at 400 East Hillcrest Drive and 444 East Hillcrest Drive for 444 LLC as it pertains to the addition of seventeen apartment units. I take a motion?
So moved?
Second.
Motion by Alderman Smith, second by Alderman McAdams, city manager Nicholas?
Thank you, and I want to thank petitioner Chuck Shepherd, who's here tonight, been sitting patiently in the, there was no way I could have moved this upfront, ordinances come last, but I've, I've referred admiringly to Chuck as a master builder and, and he's certainly been a developer of local properties, longtime resident, business owner, and he owns a very attractive commercial office buildings at 400 and 444 East Hillcrest. And as we've talked from time to time in, in these meetings and as many of you know, the commercial office market has never fully recovered from the, the Great Recession, we, we do have comings and goings still, but there's still a fair amount of vacancies at different parts of the community. And although a little more than half of the second floor are rented, when you're, when you own buildings and you're keeping them up really good, you're hoping that you can keep a higher level of occupancy than Mr. Shepherd's been able to do, and it's not for any lack of investment on his part, when he took over these buildings that were very tired and rundown some years ago and new roofs, new, new paint and windows and, and a lot of, lot of improvements inside and the parking lot paved and, and they really sparkle right now, and he wants to keep it that way. So, he had talked to Dan Olson, our principal planner, about the possibility of, obviously from his own pocket, converting the second-story commercial office spaces which are a, a challenge to rent into apartment units. And the plan commission took this up last week and after looking at some pretty extensive background, it's also available, was available to you in a council background as well, and determined unanimously that this was an appropriate conversion. There's really, the work that would lay ahead if the council approved this would, would be mostly on, on Mr. Shepherd, there are a couple of minor things, some, some, there's plenty of parking there, if you've seen the area, lots of, an abundance of parking for both the combined residential and, and commercial, some, some upgrades to the handicap signage for the handicap parking spaces, it's very minor cost and would certainly be done before they'd be occupied with the council's support. We ask that you approve the plan commission's recommendation, they voted five to zero in favor of this application.
Counsel? Alderman, sorry, Alderman Larson?
I answered both. The one question, I had talked to some of the current people that do business down there, if, you know, what they thought, and they were, you know, excited because to have a full building means their rents aren't going to be up because of the cost. The one concern is whenever you have mixed, you know, buildings like that, is there going to be some steps taken to assure that if somebody's upstairs living and doing their day-to-day, maybe vacuuming while they're listening to their music, somebody trying to have a quiet meeting down below, will there be enough insulation and stuff that everybody will be happy with what they're trying to do at certain times during the day? That was the concerns that I got and, and I can see that, that it's a problem.
Mr. Shepherd, do you want to address that at all?
Actually, when the buildings were built, they actually used wood construction, which tends to be more quiet, and they, excuse me, used plywood, then soundboard, then plywood, and we're looking at additional things to do to, to address that, so.
Well, they look fabulous, so I figured that you would probably take care of it, but just wanted to be sure.
Other comments?
No, I just got to say, you know, I've known Chuck for quite a few years and the, the character of the man, I think, is a reflection in the properties that he has and the construction projects that he does, they're usually of the highest, highest caliber, so I can only anticipate this is going to be a, a nice addition to the city of DeKalb and appreciate your continued investment in the city of DeKalb, Mr. Shepherd.
All right, with that, roll call, city clerk Cohen?
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes. All right, that ordinance passes, so, oh, what?
I moved, we, we have second reading and approval.
Ah, wonderful. I have a motion to move second reading and approve?
Second?
Second, so a motion by Alderman Favor, second by Alderman McAdams, discussion? City clerk Cohen, roll.
McAdams.
Yes.
Favor.
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes. Awesome. So you can move forward and you go, Chuck. You betcha. All right, reports and communications, counsel. All right, reports and communications, counsel. So we'll start Alderman Larson.
As I was reading through the different packets we got for this meeting, I just want to reach out again to thank the fire department. I was amazed at how many times we are in a situation in DeKalb where there's so many calls concurrently within this 15-minute window, that people that are off work with their families get a call saying, "Could you come back to staff in case somebody else calls?" And how often your force does that, and that's just a testament to your department, and I thank you for that.
Alderman Smith?
Be prepared, we're having a third ward meeting. It's actually gonna be at Fire Station One. Chief McMasters have been very gracious. We'll be releasing the date in the very near future for that. That's it.
Alderman Perkins?
No report.
Alderman McAdams?
No report.
Alderman Favor?
No report.
For me, I just gotta say thank you to all the staff that have taken the time to reach out to me. I've been making my rounds to as many departments as I can. Everyone's been incredibly gracious with their time, and the thing I continuously walk away with is what an amazing crew we have here at the city of DeKalb. So again, thank you so much for that. Thank you, counsel, for those that I've had one-on-ones with. I'm making my way through everyone, and it's been great, and I appreciate the time that you have, and thanks to everyone for the little full pause that happened here and there. We'll get this over time. But with hearing that, we'll move on to executive session, which we have none tonight. So at this point, I would take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
So motion by Alderman Perkins, second by Alderman Favor. Roll call, City Clerk Cohen?
Favor.
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes. We are adjourned.